Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, August 4th, Willmar City Council Meeting to order. Kevin, would you please read the roll?
Mayor Yanisch. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Amen. Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Would you please rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Just on...
Councilmember Nelson.
A question on item C.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I did not see an application form. There was just a letter there, and I thought the process was that an application needed to be filled out with some information about the person, so I was just curious about that.
Typically, that's the case, and I did ask that same question in our preliminary meeting earlier in the day, and the mayor has signed off on that one, so we will visit with him to make sure that we get applications.
So could we get some basic information on this gentleman even though we're doing the appointment?
We will do that.
We can certainly do that.
All right.
And just ask him to fill it out retrospectively.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes. We now move to the Willmar Council City Open Forum. Do we have anyone signed up?
We have three, Mr. Mayor. Starts with Mr. Bob Score.
Okay. Mr. Score, state your name and address, please.
Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street, Willmar. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Wasn't planning on talking tonight, usually it seems like I do, but I got a question on, need a little clarification on some right-of-way, I guess. I got a, it says reminder for campaign signs letter. I received it on Wednesday, the 23rd of July, and it said, I'll just cut to the chase here, it says, "Signs shall be placed behind the sidewalk where sidewalks are present, where sidewalks do not exist. Signs shall be placed a minimum distance of 14.5 feet behind the curb." So I went down, I was a little curious on this letter, because it's, just looked kind of generic, so I went down to the city office and talked to the gal down there, and she said all the, what do I want to say here? Anyway, everybody received one that's running for office, and that is not true. I know there's one that did not get one, so I'm just kind of wondering why not everybody got one. My question is, is this came out on a Wednesday. After I was up at the office, I wanted to make sure that my signs were in compliance, so I went out with a tape measure for every one I knew where there was not a sidewalk, and I measured them, 14.5 feet. We had till the 29th to be compliant. Well, in the morning, I left to go visit a classmate of mine in a wheelchair up by Hibbing, and on the way up there, I got a call saying, "Your signs made the paper." And I'm going, "Why? I just got this. I have till the 29th." So that would've came out on the 24th. You know, thanks for the free advertising, but on the other side is, you didn't give everybody a chance to be compliant, and I don't quite understand that. The other thing is, is the 14.5 feet on this right-of-way business, I just measured from my curb, the boulevard is seven and a half feet, my sidewalk's four and a half feet, that's a total of 12 feet, so that's a discrepancy of two and a half feet. Why isn't, you know, again, it's just a matter of, a lot of people have questioned me on this and are kind of torqued because they feel they, they mow that yard, they mow that 14 and a half feet, they shovel that sidewalk, they keep it clean, they trim the trees, they plant stuff on it, make it look nice, and they can't support something they feel is worthwhile, so they're saying, "Well, maybe we shouldn't mow, maybe we shouldn't shovel." You know, I see Bruce is here tonight, and it's his department, maybe I can get some clarification on that, you know, what people should really look for on that.
I think I...
Can I do that?
On something like that. I think we'll have staff get back in touch with you, because I don't, I don't know, I haven't heard from any other candidates, so Bruce will make contact with you so that you have a full understanding of that.
Well, I was just hoping that it could be on TV tonight, so people don't just hear it second place from me, that they can hear it right from Bruce. But my other question was, has there been any signs, it says if they're not compliant, has there been any signs confiscated? Can I ask anybody? Anybody know that?
That should be an easy yes or no.
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 Okay. All right. So anyway, okay, I'll wait to have Bruce get back.
We'll make sure you, you get a full description of exactly what that is.
Because I just want to be able to relay it on, so everybody fully understands it.
That's our job.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Wow.
I couldn't read it either, sir, so I'll have to ask someone.
The someone else has signed, I think I know who it is, but County 9.
I apologize.
Okay.
I signed up on your forum, and I'm here for a specific...
Just come on up and introduce yourself. I thought it might be you, but I wasn't.
I was here for a hearing.
Oh, you're here for a hearing.
I'm here for a specific issue. I signed up for your forum.
Okay. All right.
But there's not...
John Chester.
I'm in the same...
Same thing.
Well...
Yeah, let's talk about that a minute.
If you'd mind, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Or just...
There's no hearing on what that man is here for, because I understand what he's here for, and if he makes no comment now, there's no opportunity to have a comment in community development when they just make a motion to introduce an ordinance for a hearing.
Okay. Let's explain what we're going to do tonight. I mean, all we're doing tonight is deciding if we want to set a public hearing, at which point we would invite the public to comment. The council hasn't even decided at this point if they're going to have a public hearing, so that will come up, you know, later on in the agenda under the, which one, which one is that?
Community Development.
Is that under Community Development? Okay. So that'll come up later, and like I said, that's merely to set the public hearing, so if you want to make a comment, you can make a comment, you know, we'll allow that now.
Then I will.
Okay.
My name's Chad Compton. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I understand that the city is thinking about raising building permit fees, and I've done a lot of research, been before you council members before, on permit fees. But I've done a lot of research on trying to find out what the justification is to raise the building permit fees. You know, some may say that the department's losing money, but I have found no annual reports or anything that indicate that. Now, I may be just looking in the wrong spot, although I do know one spot that Minnesota statute says I should be able to look, and that's Minnesota Statute 326B dot 145, and that's an annual report that every municipality is supposed to fill out. The only two I've been able to find on there are 2008 and 2010, so we got a lot of years here that, that we can't find the information. And another Minnesota statute, 462 353, also indicates that all fees must be fair and reasonable and be used for that purpose only. So when you're moving forward, just keep those two in mind.
Okay.
But I think the citizens of Willmar probably need to know why. Why are we raising building permit fees? So that's all.
Okay. Thank you. John, would you like to speak?
My name is John Chester. I own Chester Contracting here in Willmar. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council for letting me speak. I get the same, maybe frustration on why we're raising building permit fees in Willmar. I think we're already paying more than we should for billing permit fees in the city of Willmar, and I can give you two examples that are my personal experiences with that. Just recently, I applied for a billing permit for a project that was about $30,000, just a small project here in Willmar. Went to pick up the permit, and the valuation on the permit form said $49,000. So I am paying permit fees on $19,000 worth of construction that I'm not even building. So I'm feeling I'm already paying more for permits than I should be for that. And then a second case that happened to me about five years ago, had plans into the city, called up, "What's the permit fee going to be for this project?" I was told around $24,000. I went and signed a contract with that, with that owner. Week later, I went and applied for that permit. The permit's $30,000. So the first day of the project, I ate $6,000 on that project because I was told the wrong amount, and I complained about it and basically fell on deaf ears. And so that's the reason I'm, I'm asking that you reconsider raising these permit fees, because I feel that we're already paying, paying too much the way it is, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank both of you for your comments, and I'm sure we'll discuss that further if we have a public hearing. Okay. Is there anyone else that wanted to address the city council? Okay. Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities report, Mr. Flaherty.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Tim Flaherty. I'm here representing the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. We did distribute kind of the final report. I'm not going to go through that. You can look at it. The PowerPoint I'm going to do is just be a very brief summary of what happened this session, and I'll leave copies of the PowerPoint with Charlene, so that if you want to see some of these graphs and take them home, you can, you can do that. As you know, the coalition is made up of 85 cities, mostly, and most regional centers in greater Minnesota. It has a board of directors, and I want to thank Charlene for serving on the board this year. The issues that we cover every year are, you can see there, transportation, environmental regulation, taxation, economic development, and LGA. This year was primarily economic development and LGA. To start the session, everybody thought it was going to be kind of a short session, unsession, as was kind of referred to. In 2013, they did an LGA reform of $80 million and a new distribution formula. The February forecast, and we've had years of recession, and the February forecast that came out during the session showed a $1.2 billion surplus for the current biennium and $2.6 billion for the next biennium, the 2016-17. It's not a budget year, which we heard all the time, yet they did spend one over a billion dollars. So even though it's not a budget year, there was a lot of things going on. It was also a traditional bonding year, but in 2013, they agreed on $850 million for a bonding bill this year, and you'll see what happened to that in a minute. Our goals were to restore LGA back to the 2002 level, which we didn't think was really asking for too much, given the, the rather large surplus, and to pass some greater Minnesota economic development programs, creating a broadband infrastructure fund, 25 million for the Business Development Public Infrastructure Program, changing the Angel Investment Tax Credit Program so that it would be easier to use in greater Minnesota, and doing a new job training program that would help, help the employers in greater Minnesota, and also work somewhat on the overall comprehensive transportation package. Before we got started in the session, there was some controversy over the $80 million that was spent for local government aid in 2013 for the 2014 year. The Department of Revenue and some legislators felt that the city should have cut their levies more than they did, and so we actually met with the governor, we had letters to the editor and guest columns to try to offset this, and through the research we did, we found that it was actually the third smallest increase in the last 25 years, less than half the increase in the last 10 years. This was a chart that we used to explain to people that really they were a little bit off-base there, and that the 1.6% levy increase was, was very modest and reasonable. So then we moved on to the session after we kind of put that fire out, and we had Representative Simonson from Duluth and Senator Coonan from around here, I think. Isn't he your legislator?
Yes.
Okay. They introduced the bill for an LGA increase. We really didn't get support from the governor or the senate leadership for, for really any increase. We did have some support in the House. And so the House had decided that they would increase local aid by inflation and population growth. The senate stuck by its position of no funding for, no increased funding for LGA, and the final result was a $7.8 million increase for 2015, which was even below that inflation population amount. So for Willmar, make a long story short here, it means $37,000 increase in your LGA. That's the last green line there, from what it would have been, really without our efforts. So moving on, past local aid, the next things we were working on were really broadband and the broadband infrastructure fund, and we actually did some research, working with businesses throughout greater Minnesota. We found that it was really the number-one issue that was a hindrance to economic growth. So the governor's task force came out with a recommendation for a $100 million broadband fund. They didn't really have any legislation, so we drafted some based on the New York law, which was to really stimulate better broadband in rural areas. And so we, we had that bill introduced, was a, was a very big issue. We did have support from 18 editorial boards in greater Minnesota. Wasn't in the governor's budget, the senate wasn't interested in it. We had some significant resistance from, from particularly the, some of the large providers, incumbent providers. The House did propose 25 million for the fund, and the final result was a $20 million fund. We are going to cover this at the summer conference in Rochester, August 20th, but that was one thing that was a good result for the session, although we thought it should have been, should have been somewhat higher. Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program is a program where cities can get matching funds to extend, like sewer and water and roads, to help private expansion, private business expansion. And you can see there, the governor put 5 million in, the House 5 million, and we ended up with 6.2 million in funding for that program. So if you have a business that's expanding, you should think about applying for that mon, the money. The maximum amount is a million dollars, and it's a matching fund program, you can't get over 50%, but if you have a business or an industrial park, and you need to put infrastructure in, it is a program to help cities provide that, that infrastructure for, for private business growth. There's a couple of other things. I'm just going to skip through them, because our time is limited, but they're described in the materials. The Angel Investment Fund is something they did fund this year. 90% of the money goes to the metro area under this program, and it's because the program really is not well-suited to greater Minnesota. So they did make a couple changes, and if you have small businesses that are looking for investment capital, you should look at this. There is a reservation for nine months for projects in greater Minnesota, for businesses in greater Minnesota, or minority-owned businesses. We also made some improvements, the Greater Minnesota Internship Program, which I think is being used now by MENSQ and other private institutions in the state, and also the Greater Minnesota Business Expansion Program, which is just coming online now, but it's a sales tax rebate for businesses in the community that are expanding. It's a very good program, I think you'll be seeing good results from. Transportation, the bottom line was, nobody wanted to do anything this year, so all they did, they didn't really do anything to raise revenues. What they did was bonding money, capital investment money, and you can see they put money in the local bridge replacement programs, the local road improvement programs. They did earmark some of it for the metro projects, which, which we were not in favor of. Corers of Commerce Program is a program that started in 2013, and we were active in lobbying on that, which Willmar, not Willmar itself, but Highway 23, did get 13 to 19 million dollars from that program. And in 2014, they put 6.5 million in for fiscal year 14, and 1.5 million is going to, for environmental work for the expansion between New London and Painesville of Highway 23. So that's, those are good things, or at least what we perceived as good things. Sometime, you might want to look at this. How did the state spend the 1.2 billion? And there you can see it. Like I said, I'll leave the, I'll leave the PowerPoint which has this in it, so that if anybody's interested, you can, it's really interesting to see where the money was spent. Conclusions about the session was, basically, we're thinking that despite a lot of talk about the unsession, there was an awful lot of controversial issues that they brought up and they dealt with, from, you probably remember, medical marijuana, minimum wage, the bullying legislation. The House was the one entity there that actually had some focus on economic development, and we were happy to see that. And they're the ones that initiated, or initiated really the broadband project and some other, other things, so we thank the House for that. Really, lack of interest from the governor and the senate. We can't really explain why that is. They did do, they did spend down the surplus, but they did do some things that we really approved of, like increasing the reserve by 150 million. So when you go to that chart, some of those things you might agree with, some you might disagree with, but we thought that they did do some good things with that 1.2 billion dollars that they, that they spent. What we learned from this session was really how hard it is to get attention for our priorities, and we wish that we had been able to convince more of the legislators of some of the priorities that we had, and we're going to talk a lot about this at the summer conference in Rochester. How can we get more legislators, and whoever the governor is, how we can get them to be more supportive of priorities that we see for, for greater Minnesota. Upcoming events now, with summer conference, August 20th to 22nd in Rochester. For those of you that have been in the, you know, been around a while and watched the coalition, every four years during the race for governor, we do a candidate forum during our summer conference. This year, the governor has notified us that he will not be participating in that. He did, through his campaign director, though, they did say they would be happy to do a forum, the same forum, in Rochester, but after Labor Day. Well, that's not really when our members will be there, but we might, we're considering that request now, and I think we have a board meeting Wednesday morning that, that Charlene can, can, can have a voice at about how we handle this. Then, and the other thing is, if any of you can come to the summer conference, they, they really are a good chance, this, to, to discuss issues. We've got the best panel in the world on, on this broadband issue, and how, we're going to be talking about how, if you're interested in doing any grant, grant applications, some of the issues involved with those. I think it'll be an excellent, excellent conference with that subject and some of the other things where we've got scheduled. Candidate forums, we, it says, "To be determined," and what we do every election cycle is have candidate forums for the legislature, and these are very important for us to both educate candidates from both parties and ask them where they stand on some of these critical rural issues. And so we'll be scheduling those for September and October, probably do eight or 10 of them this year, maybe 12. Then in, the Fall Conference is the first time we're doing it in Minneapolis, but it's kind of on the outskirts of Minneapolis, plenty of free parking at the Interstate Interchange, so it'll be easy to get to. We're trying to boost attendance for that. That's when we will look at the election results and set the policy positions and our strategy for the 2015 session. And we think the 2015 session will be, you know, very significant. We'll have new legislators. We don't know who's going to control the House, the Republicans or the Democrats. We don't know who the new governor is going to be, but, so we think it's, it's going to be an important session, so if you can, if anybody's interested in having a voice in our policies, that November 13th and 14th date is the time to, to come and, and get to work on that. We have a new website. If you haven't seen it, we like it. Most people that have seen it like it and use it, so with that, I would say that I would be happy to answer any questions. How long did I take? Was it too long?
You were fine.
Okay. Just want to, want to keep within the time limit.
You were fine.
Questions for Mr. Flaherty. Councilmember Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for coming. In 2010, I was at a League of Minnesota Cities meeting, and I distinctly remember Jim Miller saying, "Unless cities of all sizes, 835 of them, change the way they deliver city services, by 2025, we could see a huge debt booming over the cities." And so I think we need to be careful, and we appreciate, I appreciate what the league has to say, but I think we, you know, the citizens are always concerned about raising their taxes. Would you not agree?
I certainly agree. It's a very, and at the legislature, too, it's a big issue, always. Raising taxes is a very controversial issue.
Right. And so I think the efficiencies within city governments are really where we need to focus our attention and make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck on the dollars that we have right now. But anyway, I appreciate the coalition, and thanks for coming and bringing us up to date.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Tim, for coming and giving us this report. Does the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities typically endorse a candidate for governor?
Councilmember Christensen, the coalition is a nonprofit organization, so we do not endorse candidates for office. We, for, for as long as I've been representing it, which probably goes back to the 1980, mid-eighties, we have had the position that we will educate the candidates of both parties, and this goes for the candidates for governor. So we invite them to come in and be briefed on rural issues. They, they're free to take whatever position they want, but, and many of them take us up on it. We've had the, the, the board of the coalition, for example, we invited all the candidates for the primary, the Republican side, to come in and visit with the board, talk about the issues informally. So really, the coalition is not endorsing candidates, it's just educating candidates and hoping that they will be favorable once they, once they learn about the issues.
So then... So then, the forum that you hold for them is meant to, you to inform them more than they informing you?
Well, it's, we inform them, and then the goal is to have them tell us what their views are. Now, this forum in Rochester was going to be done by, sponsored by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, the Post Bulletin, Rochester Post Bulletin and Rochester Chamber. We were going to agree on the questions that would be asked of the candidates, but the goal is to have them discuss, intelligently discuss the rural issues and tell us what their opinions are, what their views are, what is their vision for Greater Minnesota? What do they think about broadband? What do they think about LGA? What do they think about these things? So it's not just a love fest, or, and it's not meant to criticize any of them, it's meant to inform them and then have them give us their opinion. And then you all, and we broadcast these, this is going to be, this was going to be a live broadcast on public TV, then the public can make their mind up based on what these candidates say. So that's kind of the goal there.
Okay. And then I want a personal comment from you, just, do you think it's good for one party to control all three sections of government in St. Paul? I'm just curious, your own opinion.
My own opinion? Frankly, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's a personal opinion.
No, that's what I asked.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you again for coming.
Anyone else? I just want to comment on this broadband thing. This is really a big deal, and we're just learning more about it now. Candy High County is really hurting, and that money that's out there, that's allocated for 14 or 15, who determines and what is the allocation process?
Councilmember Anderson, the process which we established in the law that was passed sets out certain criteria, whether you're, and really, I didn't cover this, which I could have. For Candy High County, you have a lot of, you have very few households that don't have any service, but you have a very large number of households, and I don't know if I probably have it in my materials, but a very large number that are underserved, which do not meet the state goals. So it's a, it's a big issue and a big problem here. So I understand that. The process is going to be the, and the Director of the State Office of Broadband is going to be at the conference, and she's going to talk about this, but there'll be an application process where you talk, where you can join with a provider, an existing provider, a new provider. It could be a public system, it can be a private system. The idea is you, we want to get the job done, whether it's public, private, or some partnership of public and private. So you make applications to the State Office of Broadband, they will make their, I think I heard that they would make their decisions and awards like in January, I think. So the application criteria and everything should be available in September. You should be working on those applications now. I mean, if you read the legislation, you'll kind of know what, know what you should be looking for. But the funding is very limited. The Broadband Task Force, I think wisely said 100 million dollars is kind of a starting point. Well, they have 20, and I understand some legislators want to see, well, how does it work first before we put more money in it? So that was kind of their rationale for starting with 20. But I think that there'll be a very high demand for that money, but I think, you know, everybody's on equal footing. So if you can get your proposals together, make an application, you may be one of those that is selected. You may not, but at least then we'll know what the demand is out there for this kind of matching funds.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for coming out. It's always a pleasure to have you here and to listen to what you have to say.
Thank you. We very much appreciate your membership in the Coalition, and any of you that can come to the Rochester Conference, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go to the Public Works Safety Committee report of July 29th. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We did meet on the 29th of July at 4:45 PM. Item number one, we called the meeting to order. There were no public comments, so we went on to item number three, which was a request to purchase slash replace a skid steer loader with attachments. And this is a resolution. Our Public Works Director brought forth the, for approval, the request to purchase and replace a skid steer loader with the attachments. Total cost to the S590T for Bobcat with all options package was $50,372.60. This cost includes a trade-in value of $14,750 for the current 2,000 Bobcat with attachments. Our 2014 CIP program had included $81,435 for the purchase and replacement of the current skid loader. The 2,000 Bobcat currently has 2,130 hours on it, and there have been several issues reported on difficulty from keeping the unit from creeping, as well as hydraulic problems. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to purchase and replace the skid steer loader with attachments as requested. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to replace the skid steer loader with the attachments. It's a roll call, Kevin.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen. Christensen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Duncan.
Aye.
Fagerley.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item number four was, had to do with the painting of the Public Works garage. This is for information only. Once again, our Public Works Director brought forth the, for approval, the repair and painting of the Public Works garage. Quotes were solicited for pressure washing, scraping, caulking cracks, and painting the exterior of the building, with one quote being received from Guptil Painting Contractors for $41,624. Staff also recommended an alternate one to paint the exterior doors and frames for $950, totaling $42,574. The committee questioned the insulation qualities of the building and the investment savings of using a metal skin on the exterior instead of painting. The committee recommended further discussion and a final decision be made at the council meeting Monday, August 4th. So I will open it up for discussion.
I'm wondering.
Staff has a recommendation?
Yeah. Sean, do you have thoughts on this?
I do, Mayor Protem and members of council. I've done some research on this since our conversation at the committee meeting, and upon just initial, kind of a quick estimate of the requested option, which would be the new skin, furring channels, rigid insulation, metal siding and paint, the initial cost estimate, mind you, of that would be between $225 and $290,000 to do that project, whereas this particular project request was for $42,000 to clean, repair and paint the existing
So you would still recommend just the painting and?
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, yes, I would still recommend the painting, the initial bid as presented, and my recommendation would be to accept that bid and enter into contracts.
I will make that motion and staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to accept the bid from Gutt Pope painting for 41, 624, plus the exterior doors and frames of 950, totaling 42,574. It's a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Duncan.
Aye.
Fagerley.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item number five was old business. Our fire chief, Gary Hendrickson, provided an update on the fire department activities. He stated, so far in 2014, we've had 178 fire calls, slightly above the amount last year. A majority of the calls have been for alarm system activations. Our chief also noted that the average response time from the station to the address is nine minutes. Fire Department is also currently advertising for a paid-on call of firefighters, displaying a sign on First Street with word of mouth, and with word of mouth. So if you're interested in joining the fire department, he's looking for people. The department will be partnering with Caribou Coffee to advertise by providing information and applications at their store. I suggested using the LED signs of the local businesses in town to advertise the openings as well. Our chief also informed the committee that the fire department is gauging interest from area townships and cities on their possible support in the Shared Services Grant. The grant would allow jurisdictions to participate in a study of shared service model to enhance the quality of fire and EMS services, leverage acquisition of the latest equipment and training, and reducing the operational costs in the future. A letter indicating their participation would be due to our chief by August 25th, so that he may move forward in the grant process. Also, our chief of police, Mr. Felt, was there, giving us the jail census for that day, July 29th. It was 119. He also stated that the calls for service the previous two weeks were 832 calls. A majority of these calls were for traffic stops, followed by public assists and animal complaints. We also had Sunshine Festival, and it went very well, with only 16 calls for service. There were no cars towed. Chief Felt also reported the appearance of less graffiti with the gang enforcement team remaining active to combat those issues. It was requested that Chief Felt compile information on how many inmates from other agencies, as well as Immigration and Customs Enforcement, holes are included in the jail sentence, census. Councilmember Amen commented it would be helpful if local government could receive information on the number of people placed in the community by ICE. It was discussed by the committee if the 287G program is still being used, and our chief stated that it is no longer offered by the federal government. Item number five, new business. Mr. DeBlick noted that the wind turbine now has its new nose cone installed, and I don't, I didn't see it working, but they say it's going to be turning soon. There was no further business to come before the committee, and if there's no questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to file the minutes. Are there any? Councilmember DeBlick.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just, wind turbine, both turbines have been working the last several days.
Good. Anything else? If not all in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes. Community Development Report, July 31st. Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We met at 4:45 at City Hall. Members present were the committee members, myself, DeBlick, Duncan and Johnson, also present with Councilman Amen, Councilperson Nelson, Bruce Peterson, Director of Planning and Development, Colleen Thompson, Waste Water Treatment Supervisor, Bev Dotery, John Chester and Bob Hogan. Item number two, John, was public comments. John Chester of Chester Contracting addressed the committee, as he did tonight, and expressed his concern about permit fees going up and state guidelines used for project valuation. Mr. Chester was informed that the council would be conducting a public hearing on the fee issue, and he was invited to attend. Item three, municipal code amendments, use of sidewalks. Staff presented a proposal to amend the municipal code to change three things in the section regarding the use of sidewalks. Those three things are allowed, are to allow the use of sidewalks seven days per week for qualifying businesses, to eliminate the property removal requirements so businesses can leave tables and chairs out, and to include licensed liquor establishments has allowable users of the adjacent sidewalk. The committee discussed the possibility of requiring fences on the sidewalk to separate the use. Bev Dotery stated that it was the responsibility of the facility manager to control access for liquor establishments, both inside and outside the building. And this was a motion. A motion was made and seconded that the council refer the matter to the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinance. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to send this to the city attorney to prepare an ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Item number four, utility services in multifamily buildings. This is a motion also. The committee discussed utility billing for residential structures with more than one dwelling unit, but with only one meter. Property owners have complained about getting a separate meter charge for each unit. Primary committee concerns were about ambiguous definitions in the city's rate schedule, landlords being unable to pass along costs, and the possibility that increased costs could lead to poor maintenance of the structure. Mr. Bob Hogan, who owns an 18-unit building, says he is paying about $75 per unit for sewer and thought that was too high. He said the rental market does not allow him to pass those charges on to the tenant. Following discussion, a motion was made and passed to refer this matter to the Finance Committee to review the rate schedule and better define terms and procedures. I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to refer this matter to the Finance Committee. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yeah, I don't know if we fully vetted this matter when it was in front of the Community Development Committee, and I'm wondering if the proper place for this isn't the Community Development Committee instead of the Finance Committee. We didn't talk about that, we just acted on it rather quickly at our meeting. It's a revenue matter, but it, I think, directly relates to community development and maintenance of buildings and so on. So I, I guess I would move at this time that we amend the motion to refer it back to the Community Development Committee for further discussion.
Sir, second.
I'll second that for more discussion.
I have a question. I guess I'm, it matters not to me, but I don't think that I understand your reasons for not wanting to move it.
Well, it was placed in front of the Community Development Committee, and I think we rather hastily concluded that day, including myself, that we should refer it to the Finance Committee. And I just, the more I thought about it, it seems to me to be a community development matter. That's my feelings of it, and of course, I don't know that there's any, if that's going, that won't make any difference, I don't think, in how soon the matter is resolved. So.
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question. I attended that meeting. My thought with it, I'm not sure which committee it makes a difference, but I do think the information came out of that rate study that was reviewed by the Finance Committee and by the whole council. So I thought that there was a direction to go back and ask even for more information from that rate study as to how those rates were determined and some of the figures that were in there. So maybe it needs to be a full council matter to come back to it. I don't know where staff took it or what their plans were as far as researching, if they were going to go back to Springstead or wherever. So I'm curious about what do we need to get to, to find out this information, because it was sort of passed back and forth between, is it the utilities or is it the council? And, you know, the council made the, took the steps, but utilities had to implement it. So I guess ask staff with, how do we get to the bottom of finding out about this information?
Well, the city council takes the action and establishes the rates, and the rates are billed through the utility, but the utility doesn't establish the rates. Those are, those are established by you, the city council, and that was done, I can't remember the exact date now, but a while, not too long ago, as part of the rate study, and that rate study was done by Springstead. And we did spend quite a bit of time on that rate study. I'm looking at Mr. Okens, if he remembers when that rate study was completed, if it was January of this year, but we can go back and find, that's where, that's where we would start, is to go back and look at that, and then we'll look at that rate study. There were some suggestions on meter charges that came from, I'm not sure if it was the full council or at a finance full council or at a finance committee, but that was done, and then some adjustments were made to the rates. Ultimately, that rate structure was approved by the city council, but we'll start by looking at that and kind of bringing that back forward. And, I mean, as to which committee, I don't know that it makes that much difference.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just brought it to community development because I was receiving phone calls and letters, and we talked about it at the committee meeting, and staff said it should go to finance. So.
That was where the original rate structure was dealt with, and I think that was the reason for it. But if, you know, the council wants to do it differently, you can certainly do that.
You know, we've got to get the job done, whether it's community development or whether it's finance. So I think, okay, are we ready to move on the amendment? And the amendment is to move it back to community development? Councilmember Fagerly.
If we do that, then Mr. Okins would have to come, too, because he's our finance person. Bring it to finance, he's already there at the meeting, so.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. No.
No.
The amendment passes, so now we'll go to the original.
Fails.
Uh, fails. Did I say passes? It fails. I'm sorry.
New rules.
Slip of the tongue. We'll go to the original motion, which was to refer it to finance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
All right, item five, vacant building registration. Staff presented a proposal to consider a vacant building registration program as a means of reducing the number of nuisance violations tied to vacant properties. It was brought to the committee to see what type of appetite the council might have for pursuing such a program. The committee discussed the pros and cons of such a process. It was agreed that the vacant properties lead to increased nuisance complaints. There was also concern expressed about the public safety issues relative to vacant structures. There is no current count of vacant structures in the city of Wilmer. Staff recommended a windshield survey of vacant buildings to gather that information. Once that number is obtained, additional information can be brought to the committee to see if they would like to pursue such a registration program. Item six, business incentives process. Staff reviewed the current process for considering and granting business incentives. The various policies adopted by the council relative to business subsidies, financial incentives, as well as specific incentives were available to the committee for their review and discussion. Councilmember Johnson requested that staff provide a periodic report to the council regarding the number of inquiries received for financial incentives. Staff agreed that that could be done on a regular basis. Old business. Staff provided updates on the final airport land release and the historical mitigation process, both which are well underway. There was also brief discussion about the UMAC building, the former Erickson Furniture Building. Staff told the committee that he had been in contact with their attorney, and it was now unclear whether they were going to pursue demolition or building rehab. So we don't know anything there yet. New business. Staff provided a brief update on a number of projects, including Ralco, Genio Turkey Store, Taco Bell, Aldi, and Bethesda Pleasant View, as well as the Wilmer Avenue railroad crossing and industrial park development projects. There's no questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the community development minutes. Are there any questions? Councilmember Nelson.
I do have a question, and I don't know if, I know we're going to talk about, if we're going to do the, for the rate, can't even say the right word.
Building.
No, for the.
Sewer? Metered.
The, oh my gosh. I'll just skip it and go to what my question is. Excuse me. I know John Chester has been at the meeting the other night talking about building permit increases, but I'm just curious if this is appropriate, just to ask staff to comment about how we determine the value of what we charge for a building permit. Sorry for the moment there. Or do we want to do that under the other part?
Well, when, I mean, the next thing on our agenda is consideration introducing an ordinance amending the new fee schedule.
I just didn't know where it was appropriate to ask, so I'm fine with waiting now.
Let's do it when we get to that topic.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Okay, so here we are. Consideration of an ordinance amending ordinance number 1265 by approving a new fee schedule. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Protem, members of the council. At a council meeting several weeks ago, staff was directed to pursue the adoption of a new building code permit and plumbing fee schedule. Staff did provide copies of the proposal to the council and the committee at that time. The necessary ordinance has been prepared, using the fees recommended by staff and as discussed by the committee on June 12th and by the full council on June 16th. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing to be held August 18th.
Okay, so all we're doing now is setting a public hearing for our next city council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? I'll second it. I think it's appropriate, go ahead and ask your question now.
Just a point of clarification, as you look at the rates, I think, I'm just curious about his comments about the amount versus, I mean, how it's calculated. To me, he puts together the total fee, so I'm just curious about that, so.
It's pretty simple to describe, Councilmember Nelson. The state of Minnesota provides us with a square foot rate to calculate values for different types of construction. When we get plans in, based on the type of construction, we apply those square foot rates and do a very simple mathematical calculation of the value based on the state standard. It is not typically the same exactly as what the contractor would agree to build the project for. It was done to create uniformity across the state, recognizing differences between metropolitan areas and rural areas. So our, the square foot levels or the square foot rates that we apply are already adjusted for our geographic area. As I said, it's typical that the amount that we calculate in-house is not going to be the same as what the contractor calculates. If a contractor calls and wants a building permit estimate rather than telling us what he thinks the value is, he should tell us how many square feet and what the type of construction's going to be, and in two minutes, staff can call them back and have a much more accurate calculation performed.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This is just for the hearing, so that at that hearing, you know, these gentlemen could come back and then express their feelings toward this. I feel pretty much the same as what they stated in their comments in the open forum. I think inspection fees are plenty high, and it's for us to be increasing them 10%. I'm curious as to where that 10% came from, and so they can be prepared at the hearing to tell us maybe a five-year history of where we have been and what our revenues were the last five years and what our expenses have been the last five years. And also, the amount of money that we're receiving from the county to have our inspectors go over there and help them do their inspections. I understand that they're working there either two or three half-days per week and have been for pretty much this year and part of last year. I'm curious as to what we're charging and what we're receiving from the county in that item.
Okay, thank you. I would tend to agree. I think it's only fair. The council asked for staff to come up with some recommendations. I think it's appropriate that we have the public hearing and then we make the decision after we've heard all the public. So. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. At the committee meeting, I did ask if we could raise the commercial rate and keep the residential, and I haven't heard back yet, but can you check on that so we have that information?
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Nelson.
One other question. I believe you had some of this information at that previous meeting, but will we have comparisons as to other communities, our size, as to what their charges are?
Okay. All right. All in favor of setting the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. That passes. Consideration of street vacation of Wilmer Avenue Southwest. Is that Mr. Peterson, or is that Sean?
In conjunction with all the activity that's happening on the west side of Wilmer with regard to former Highway 40 and Wilmer Avenue, it's necessary that a portion of former Wilmer Avenue, or the old section of Wilmer Avenue, be vacated. This vacation is part of the planned Genio Turkey Store project, as well as part of the Genio Sale transaction. The planning commission has approved the resolution recommending the street vacation to the city council, and it's that portion of Wilmer Avenue that is west of the railroad to its former intersection with former Highway 40. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for the August 18th council meeting, and this is a requirement under our charter. I'm sorry, under our municipal code.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for August 18th on this matter. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. Consideration, where am I? Consideration of street, consideration request to vacate a portion of a utility easement.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, this is connected to the Bethesda Pleasant View expansion project. Women's Municipal Utilities received a request to vacate a portion of an easement that currently encumbers the Bethesda property, and it conflicts with their expansion plans. The current line is planned to be rerouted by the utilities according to the expansion plans, and a new utility easement will be recorded once the new line is installed. Bethesda submitted a petition to the Municipal Utilities Commission, who approved the easement vacation request. Several years back, the city attorney drafted a revision to our process that allows for municipal utilities easements to be handled directly by their commission with the blessing of the council. So this does not require a public hearing. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the electric line easement as shown in your attachment, and to record the resolution with the recorder's office.
Mayor Protem, introduce the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, for a resolution to vacate a portion of utility easement. Discussion. A roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
We need to schedule a board of canvas meeting. Kevin.
Mayor Protem, members of the council. You are well aware that there's a primary election on August 12th, and we have a municipal primary in Ward Two. We need to set a board of canvas. It'll probably take anywhere from four to five minutes, but it still needs to be done to open up the envelope and read those for council member Ward Two. Staff's recommendation is to have it on August 15th at 3 o'clock.
What would the council like to do?
Move to approve.
Second.
Just a motion and a second to have the board of canvas August 15th, 3 p.m. Further discussion? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. How many members do we need there?
Quorum.
Aye.
We have no restrictions for those who are candidates. The county does, but not municipal. So at least five.
Five.
If we can get five people thinking they're freed up.
I guess I would say if you have a problem, maybe you ought to let Kevin know sometime in the next few days so that we can make sure we have a quorum. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. Consideration of the Wilmer Auditorium remediation. Who's, Kevin, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. And I may add, you have a paper document before you rather than what is on your electronic devices. On July 28th, staff opened the bids for the first step in the repair of the Wilmer City Auditorium, and this would be the remediation of the asbestos and lead contaminants in the area. The bids are before you. Of those four bids, we will talk about the value of the Echo bid from Hastings, Minnesota, and we have various alternates. I will explain them, and then the staff recommendation. This is a base bid plus dumpster load firm bids for various items. So the base bid starts at the low bid of $218,000. Alternates to consider, starting with alternate one, a potential to deduct and save $5,000 if you choose to leave the attic ducts in place, capping them at the ends, where you'll encapsulate the lead dust in that and then not use those ducts. It says the new ducts will run alongside, but actually they'll be in the ceiling area of that auditorium. Alternate two, if you chose it, is to reduce it $7,000. On each end of the main auditorium, you have balconies, and underneath the balconies are some ductwork that are full of lead dust that can be capped. The benefit of capping is it undisturbs, more or less, the historical layout of that city auditorium. Anytime that you choose to tear out the ductwork, then the subsequent big bid package that Engen Associates is putting together would have framing, sheet rocking, and virtually sand painting to try to put it back to its historical perspective that we certainly have now. Alternate three, to deduct or save $5,000 by not taking the ductwork out under the lobby doors. Right when you walk in, between the two big oak doors going into the auditorium, there's a big boxed-in area there that can be capped, and that run will not be used in the proposed improvements to both the standalone mechanical systems for the auditorium and the gun range. Alternate four is to deduct $11,000 by leaving the horizontal duct down in the basement, again, capping both ends. That ductwork is at the bottom of the steps going down, going somewhere from turning to the left, the mechanical room, and heading south toward the gun range. A different alternate five is to deduct, staff is not recommending it, but I forget the footage, but there's roughly 260 feet or so of asbestos wrap around thermal system that has to come out because it's being disturbed in the process. Because of that, an additional figure of around $15,000 to a consultant to do the asbestos air testing must be undertaken. This $9,500 alternate that's before you, you could save that if you left 200 feet of asbestos wrap over the thermal system piping and fittings. Staff is not recommending that. Staff is not recommending that because of the fact of you're doing a little more than that already, that has to come out, and you have to spend $15,000 of air testing for this asbestos. So this recommendation is to not save that money, spend $9,500 and get all the asbestos wrap off that thermal system. It seems prudent at this time, but it is an option to save. Then the dumpster bids are shown there for you, just because there's various different types, and they have a set price. But there's a 40-yard dumpster for the demolition that's non-hazard, which would be the sheet rock and so forth that's taken down around the ductwork. There's a 40-yard dumpster price for non-demolition waste, which is pretty much what we deem contaminated city-owned property. And we're estimating those dumpsters and showing a cost there. The largest one, of course, is the 40-yard dumpster each, the lead hazardous material, which is the ducts. And of course, should you choose not to take some of those alternates and tear away the duct, that dumpster load will be less. So one offsets the other. But those are the staff recommendations at this time that we could, if you are comfortable with encapsulating ductwork that has lead dust in it, that it won't be a concern to the public, we can save the first four alternates. Again, staff recommendation is to take care of all the asbestos wrap around the thermal system at this time, since we're spending so much on the air handling or air testing. We have given a reasonable estimate of dumpsters there that are added, the firm bid times our reasonable estimate. And so this is a recommendation by staff to enter into an agreement with Echo of Hastings, Minnesota. I hope we can get a comfortable resolution for our city attorney, but it's for that fixed dollar base, and then we can't really have a fixed price right now without knowing the volume of some of that stuff. But we think we're very close in our reasonable estimates.
So the estimated final cost, if we accepted everything that you said for deducts would be that $208,500?
Correct.
Okay, and that's an estimate. All right. Discussion. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Well, where we can save some money, I don't see why we shouldn't cap them, and we don't have to take it apart and re-sheet rock it, and I mean, it just makes sense to do the one, two, three, first four deducts, or five. Yeah, one, two, three, four, five. No, not the fifth one.
The first four, the first four are being recommended.
Makes sense, and that will affect the bottom three.
Yes, it will, correct.
So they would be less, less dumpsters there, and that's my thoughts. I don't know if anybody else is thinking that way, or...
I have a question. When we cap and don't use the ducts, we then have to put in new ductwork. So you're telling us that it's cheaper to put in new ductwork and cap and enclose the existing? Am I understanding that right?
You are. And then you'd have to visualize what your auditorium may look afterwards. If you look in a new city auditorium, new school auditorium, you'd see the ductwork. It may be rectangular, because it may fit better, but I think in a new one, you would see around almost like a 16-inch circular ductwork. If you leave the attic ductwork in, that will be visible now. The attic is above it, with a ceiling there with some lights coming down. Now you'll have a couple of those pipe, like pipe ductwork runs in there, up in the ceiling.
I agree. It makes sense to take them out. Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I tend to agree with you, but I'm wondering what would happen if an event over the years happened, and the building settles, or that capping cracks, or whatever, are we back to square one then on it, and would it not be better to, at this time?
We have Andy Engen in.
Mr. Engen, it's Mr. Andy Engen's here from the architects, and it's probably better for him to answer that question than for us to speculate.
Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, council. The question was, if we just leave the lead up there in the ductwork?
Why would we cap it and cover it? What's the potential for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years from now?
People encapsulate, you have to either abate or encapsulate these hazardous materials, whether it's asbestos or lead, and both practices are common. Oftentimes, you'll see asbestos flooring covered up by carpet, and that's acceptable in public buildings, or churches, or places where kids are on and stuff. It makes more common sense, and makes everybody feel better if you do remove it. You will be gaining a level of comfort if you do remove the stuck work. The risks, though, I mean, it is common practice in a case like this, that this stuck work could be abandoned in place and encapsulated. It's more complicated than just capping the ends. But, you know, I mean, they would be using duct seal and sealing the duct the best they can. You would run, I guess, I would say, the only time I really see it really coming back to haunt you is if it was the building that you were planning on paying to have demolished sometime. And when you're, you know, then you would have to revisit it, and it would come back, and you have to pay extra, but I don't think that's in anybody's plans right now, so...
Thank you. It's a good question. All right, any other questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Just a question, you know, people have talked about that there could be grant money out there, or some other thing, like, you know, some money if we were to do, I mean, we haven't really made a commitment as to what we're going to do with parts of the building. If we were to apply for some type of, because it is such a historical building, is it a possibility that the fact, if we leave some of this in there, could that be a detriment to us in trying to gain some help with doing something to preserve its history?
Where that comes into place, if we are going to use grant money that possibly comes from Historical Society, or is administered through the Minnesota Historical Society, they don't like seeing exposed ductwork in historic areas. And I think when they looked at, would look at a building like this, they would look at what parts of this building are still historically intact. They would probably see the facade is still historically intact, and they would see the auditorium, and possibly the lobby, although there have been some changes from the original. So that could be a potential extra hurdle. And it may be as simple as, they won't let us run exposed round ductwork through the auditorium. They may just say, put that new round ductwork, or any shape ductwork, in a soffit. So it would just be the added expense of building a soffit around the ductwork if we go down the road of, or if we end up having the historical guidelines watching what we're doing.
So if I added this up correctly, we're talking about deducting $28,000.
Yep.
But I understand that deducting that $28,000, what kind of extra costs are we going to have to replace it? Or to, or to not replace it, because we are replacing, I understand we're replacing the ductwork, but the additional costs that we'll have for taking this out?
I don't have any estimated numbers on all the different possible ways we could put the ductwork back in. I could tell you the location of this duct, this new ductwork. If we were to remove all of this ductwork, say all the ductwork was removed out of the attic, and all the ductwork was removed out of the bottom of the balcony locations, the new project could put our new ductwork back in that same location, and then enclose it up, and it would look similar to how it does now. The actual installation of exposed ductwork is likely going to be less expensive if we don't have to enclose it in soffits than trying to put it back into place of demoed-out ductwork if you were not to choose to take the deduct alternates. Logic would say it would almost be less expensive if we did, we ended up being able to just run exposed ductwork, and not have to fish it into the existing nooks and crannies of the building. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What would we like to do? Did you have another question?
Well, I just have a comment. I don't really know what the right thing is to do here. I just have a real concern. This is one of the, one of our only historic buildings. You know, we need to fix it, we need to deal with it. I just am really hesitant to, and concerned, I guess, that if there's some way that we can get some sort of historic help with this building, that we aren't shortsighted right now, that we preserve that option. And so I have a concern about that, with that. And I don't know if there's a way to find that out before we do this, or with that, but I do have, I think, some of the same concerns about leaving some things in there, and long-term, what are we doing to the history, you know, as we look forward with it, so...
Right. Those are good concerns. The steps into obtaining grant money would first start with a historic structures report. I think my office has started that smittle, just so that you would have a proposal from us to do the legwork, to get a historic structures report done. After that process is done, then you compete with other communities for possible grant money. I think the last time that those grants went around, they're possible to get, but it was, you know, like a five-to-one ratio. So they're competitive as well.
I'm not even questioning whether that's something we do in the next year or two, because I don't think we've even sat down to look at what that building maybe could be. I just am concerned that we aren't preserving that option to be able to do that if it's five years, or 10 years, or 20 years from now. So I guess I have a concern about that, and that...
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. You know, that building has been there for over 70 years, I believe, and if you take the original cost that it took to build that, plus what we've put into it those 70 years, and divide it up by 70 years, it'd be pretty cheap. We've gotten by really, really well. And I think it's worth preserving, but I also think that we need to be prudent here. We're talking about taxpayers' money, and I'm all for saving it, and I don't think the taxpayers are going to be mad because they see some ductwork that's exposed there, as long as it functions, as it works, and we can have basketball, tennis, whatever in there, and the gun range open. And I think we need to be prudent, like I said, and do the deducts. With these deducts, I'm assuming that includes the cost of the exposed ductwork?
This is, this is just the removal of contaminated...
Okay, just remove it.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the next stage.
Correct.
That's the next stage.
Correct.
I think we need to get this thing cleaned up and open and operating as soon as we can. The public expects us, expects that of us to do that. And I mean, I'm all for the deducts, except for the one that staff said, I guess is number five.
Yeah.
And then it would affect, again, the last three. You're going to have less demolition, or less dumpsters, all of this stuff out of here. So I don't know if we can come up with really a total, Kevin, I mean...
Well, we're very close with that $208,500.
I think it's, the motion would be to award the base bid in the amount of $218,000 with, and select the four, the first four alternates, and then the per, and then the per dumpster charge, that would be, and what we estimate is that that will be approximately $208,500, but the dumpsters will be charged, you know, per unit. So if there's five dumpsters, it'll be five times that. So, I mean, we're estimating five, it could be six, it could be four, but if we're looking for how to make the motion.
We'll pay for whatever the real...
What the real total number of dumpsters.
The city will incur that cost.
Correct. Correct, and they will be charged at that per-unit price.
Okay. Well, I would make that motion, so we could further this thing along and get it fixed as quick as we can.
Sir, there's, there was a second? Okay. Councilmember Nelson, you have a question?
You know, I appreciate what Mr. Christiansen, Councilmember Christiansen is saying. However, I just am really uncomfortable with looking at shortcutting this right now. You know, I've heard of other communities getting million-dollar grants to preserve, you know, I don't know that, it's a difficult decision, but I'm not sure that you can say we're being prudent if we're taking a shortcut here that eliminates our ability to save the taxpayers, or preserve a building long-term. So I'm really struggling with this one. It would feel like to me more comfortable to know that that lead is gone, and that, you know, we're paying the price to get it done, to have to do this. You know, obviously, we got here, and we need to get it done. I'm just really questioning whether we're going to be shortsighted here by not looking at the future.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The grant process, and you said you started it already, the, I believe we were told at one of these meetings, that those grants, those historical grants, weren't huge amounts.
They're not huge amounts.
They're like 6,000, 10,000, 12,000.
The small ones are 6, 10,000. The largest they're going now is 120,000. I think the last cycle, they only had a little over $2 million to allocate, so they divided that amongst, you know, 50 different qualified projects out of 200 applicants, or more.
And we'd have to stand in line.
Correct.
Wait, wait, one...
Yeah, and that, you know, that would come into place if we were, you know, if we could get a grant tomorrow for the ductwork, for the new ductwork, then they may say, yeah, your new ductwork has to go in soffits, it can't be exposed. But, you know, I think it's probably more likely that we're going to be looking down the road at a possible grant for an elevator, or remodeling classrooms on other floors, or other things that the city may decide that they wanted to use the building for. And at that time, we already have the ducts in place, and it's hard to say how the Historical Society is going to weigh one way or the other. For lack of a better example, Engen Associates building, we ran exposed ductwork on the first floor, and applied for a grant on the second floor, and had to have our ductwork enclosed. We didn't have to change anything on the first floor, it was already built, and the building is on Historic Registry. And when it came to the second floor and grant money, we, you know, used a slightly different practice of installing ductwork, and it worked for everybody, so...
So I think, just to clarify, I think what you're saying, just because the ductwork is exposed, it doesn't preclude necessarily that the city would be able to receive legacy dollars, or other types of dollars in the future, they just, on a different type of project, such as an elevator, or something else?
Or exterior renovation.
Or exterior renovation.
Correct.
But if we were trying to do and fund the ductwork through that, then it might be an issue.
Then they would, you know, like that duct up there, we could tear out that wall, take out that duct, put new duct in, or we could just cap it, put a new duct in above it, and cover it with sheetrock, and have similar grills, you know, sticking all of the sheetrocks off it, and that'd still be more, maybe more economical than trying to reuse the existing space.
Okay.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Bruce wanted to speak.
I don't know who was first. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. If I understand this correctly, if we take the deducts now and let the ductwork in, there may be additional cost to installing the new ductwork?
I, that's, not necess, some, not necessarily, because if we want to run new ductwork through the attic space, I mean, that's an awfully unpleasant and precarious place to be working up there. And depending on the contractor and the equipment they have available, they may just as well like to roll right into that auditorium with scissor lifts, and hang their ductwork from Also, the size of the existing ductwork may, or... Also, the size of the existing ductwork may or may not jive exactly with what the new duct design standards are needing, so we still may have to have offsets in soffits to enclose ductwork, trying to use old ductwork locations underneath the balconies or on the west wall or other places. So, it's not, it's not a for-sure thing that it would cost more to have it exposed. I mean, it could cost less.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Just one more question. So, we do the deducts, and we leave the ductwork there. We need to do some sort of remodel or something that's now going to affect that we have to do something with something we've left. So, are we able to remove that in, you know, the way they will be capped? Will it be able to be removed without the whole building having to go through the process again?
Yeah, it'll be a much, it should be a much simpler process just to remove a ductwork here or there. This project is not just removing ductwork, but it's washing and cleaning all the walls and the whole thing, so we're not going to, that can of worms should be opened and closed and done with. If there is a new project where we want to add a whole bunch of can lights underneath the balcony, even one of the, our local contractors could possibly, or even Montevideo local contractors would be more than able to come in and remove a couple pieces of ductwork or what we need them to do.
Okay. We have a motion in a second on the table to go with the base bid less the four deducts and then subject to the uses of the dumpsters. Kevin, I'd like to do a roll call.
Well, it is a, it'll be a contract.
Okay.
So, it does need to be a roll call. Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Dubleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Thank you. That was a very good discussion. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Announcement of council committee meeting dates. I'm going to start out with finance. At our next finance committee meeting, we would ask that all council members be present. The mayor will be introducing his budget, and because of some scheduling issues, I have conferred with Councilmember Fagerly, and we're going to switch finance and community development. So, finance will meet on the 14th, and that will get the mayor's budget if he's okay with it. And on that date, we haven't been able to reach him. And if we don't do the budget, then we'll just do the regular finance committee work, and then we will do the budget at a little bit later date. But for right now, finance will meet here, 4:45, Thursday, the 14th, here. Okay. Yes?
There is a reception planned for our Wilmer Fest Queen, the new Queen of the Lakes, Aquatania Queen, at 6 o'clock that night, that we received an email about requesting our presence.
We have some unforeseen things here. We'll have to just try to get done in a timely manner. Public Works, Public Safety, Councilmember Christensen.
The 12, 4:45 PM.
Community, I'm sorry. Community Development, Monday, August 11, 4:45, City Hall. Thank you. Do we have a labor committee meeting scheduled?
We do not.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the council? Councilmember Dubleek?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just want to announce that there's a Vision 2040 Goal One session that's going to be entitled "A Brain Gain," which encourages conversation on the changing demographics of rural Minnesota, including specific trends in the Wilmer Lakes area, which is a urban-rural This will be, the presenter is Ben Winchester of the University of Minnesota Extension Office, and he will be in town that day to conduct this session, and that will be held Friday, August 15, 10:00 AM to noon, at the Midwest Technology Campus Auditorium. And RSVPs are requested at the Wilmer Lakes Area Chamber, and there's a cost of $5.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Again, the finance committee meeting that's going to be held here is full council?
Full council.
Okay, full council participation because of the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No, I don't take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. We are adjourned.